Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. All right, well, let's, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda then?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Need discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we're going to start out with item one. We've got some Earth Month proclamations and awards. We've got a proclamation and we've got some awards. And judging by the big guns that have come out here in the, in the chambers, you've, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Coon Rapids has had a Sustainability Commission since 2009, and they have been working to expand programming for Earth Month and educate residents on sustainability. So to begin with, I'd like to just recognize the Sustainability Commission members that are here tonight, thank them for their, for their work. So if maybe you guys could wave if you're on the Sustainability Commission. Excellent. And then I thought that we could start with the proclamation and then I can run through a description of the awards.
Sure. Oh, start with the proclamation. That would be mean. All right. All right. All right, so whereas the Coon Rapids Sustainability Commission has been working to educate the people on the importance of sustainability since the commission's inception in 2009, and whereas the month of April has long been celebrated as Earth Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about environmental issues, promoting conservation efforts, and inspiring action to protect our planet, and whereas the city of Coon Rapids is committed to fostering a culture of environmental responsibility among its residents, businesses, and organizations, and to supporting initiatives that promote sustainability and protect natural resources. And whereas the observance of Earth Month presents an opportunity for our community to come together to take meaningful action to address environmental challenges such as pollution, habitat loss, and resource depletion, and whereas by acknowledging and celebrating Earth Month, we reaffirm our dedication to building a more resilient and sustainable future for all. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 to be Earth Month in the city of Coon Rapids. Proclaim this first day of April 2025.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's not an April Fool.
Yeah, exactly. And then, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the commission, as part of their Earth Month efforts, also wants to recognize some of the people who have been working on sustainability throughout the city. This is the second year that we've done our Earth Month Sustainability Awards, and the commission accepted nominations for award winners this winter in the categories of residents, businesses, and institutions. And then they voted on who to give the awards to, and we have our award winners here this evening, so I thought I could give a brief description of each award winner and then have them come forward to receive the award and take a photo. So there, our first award winner is Eric Nelson. He is a resident who was nominated for his dedication to sustainability in his personal life. He has had solar panels on his home for eight years, has a pollinator-friendly garden that helps reduce runoff and uses natural mulch. He is dedicated to recycling and repairing to reduce waste, and he composts. The Sustainability Commission thought that he was an excellent example of how Coon Rapids residents can embrace sustainability in their homes through daily actions. So thank you to Eric. And if, I think Eric is here, great, if you would like to come forward for, to receive your award. We'll have a photo opportunity, so there you are. Just do a picture make here if you want to, um, do you want to go kind of in between here? Yes, yes, so then I can see you all, yes. Here we go. One, two, three. Hang on. One, two, three. I'll just wait up after we're done here.
It's over.
All right, our next award goes to Mary T. Incorporated. They were nominated because they hold an annual Earth Day trash pickup. They have added organics recycling, and they have started an effort to remove buckthorn from their property. They have also installed a rain garden with native plants and recycle unique items like plastic bags, batteries, and styrofoam at the Coon Rapids Recycling Center. They also recently worked with the Minnesota Chamber to conduct an energy audit. So thank you, and please come forward to accept your award. We need the conversation. You block the van?
Oh, no, you're not blocking it.
One, two, three.
That's a good camera.
One, two, three. And you should stay out when you step out. All right, and our last Earth Month award goes to Anoka Ramsey Community College. They were nominated for their new beelawn and prairie garden at the Rapids campus, their new solar wall on top of the science building, their EV chargers, and their sustainability book club. So thank you to Anoka Ramsey Community College for all of their sustainability work, and please come forward to accept your award.
Kent's going to make sure I block. That's all right, that's all right.
One, two, three. One, two, three, there you go. Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just one more plug. As Earth Month continues, the Sustainability Commission will have weekly communication topics that will go out for residents, and then, similar to last year, we will have a park cleanup event at Lyons Coon Creek Park on Saturday, April 19th, at 10:00 a.m. So anyone who is interested in coming to help clean up that park is invited to join us there.
Thank you very much. And I think, I go ahead. Yeah, all the award winners, Jen's going to want you outside for another photo, so. Thanks so much. All right. Now on to things that are not nearly as much fun. We're looking to approve the minutes from our March 18th meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, was that a Carlson first?
Yeah.
And then a Butler second. Any corrections or discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from the March 18th, 2025 meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. All right, we have eight items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one is to adopt Resolution 2550, appointing Sarah Smith to the Arts Commission. Sarah Smith has submitted an application for the Arts Commission. After discussion with the applicant at the March 18th meeting, the Arts Commission recommends she be appointed to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2027. So our first action on the consent agenda will be to adopt Resolution 25-50, appointing Sarah Smith to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2007. Next item on our consent agenda is to accept a right-of-entry agreement with JHM Medical Park LLC. At its meeting on August 5th, 2024, the city council approved a site plan that includes a 39,248 square foot warehouse office building on a 2.82 acre lot located at 9255 Holly Street. The right-of-entry agreement will allow the city to enter the easement over the sidewalk in order to maintain the sidewalk, including snow removal, snow removal, and summer maintenance. The agreement will also allow the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage system within the site are considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain these items. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate public safety. So we're looking to attach, I'm sorry, accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with JHM Medical Park LLC for the construction of a 39,248 square foot warehouse office building on a 2.82 acre lot located at 9255 Holly Street. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-57, appointing Michael Hammond to the Sustainability Commission. There's currently one vacancy on the Sustainability Commission. Staff solicited applications for the vacancy and reviewed those applications with council at the February 11th work section. After review and discussion, the Sustainability Commission recommends Michael Hammond's appointment to the commission. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-57, appointing Michael Hammond to the Sustainability Commission. Item, the next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-54, accepting donations and business sponsorships. Between January 1st and March 31st, the city received the following list of donations and sponsorships for various city events and activities. There was a $500 donation from Federal Cartridge to go towards the Wellness Dog with our police department. And then we had a $2,000 donation for a sponsorship, I'm sorry, a $2,000 sponsorship from Gateway Fiber for a city event, and a $2,000 sponsorship from Magnify Financial for another city event. And then there were additionally five anonymous donations to the senior center that totaled $818.75. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-54 to accept contributions made to the city between January 1st and March 31st, 2025. Next item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of payments. Minnesota State Statute 471-38 requires a list of transactions made by electronic funds transfer be provided to the city council at the next regular meeting after the transaction. So we're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from March 13th, 2025 to March 26th, 2025. The next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-55, approving a revised lease agreement for the golf cart fleet. On March 4th, the council authorized the city to enter into a lease agreement with Huntington Bank for the purchase of new golf carts. During the final review of the document package, the city was notified that the wrong version was given to the city for review, and the original agreement was technically for a municipal fair market value lease. Since the financing agreement is for a municipal $1 purchase option, a different agreement needs to be executed. Since the revised agreement is different from the one originally presented, the council has asked to reauthorize execution of the agreement, and the agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. The financing arrangement remains the same as originally presented, but the verbiage is slightly different. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-55, authorizing, authorizing the city to enter into the master lease agreement with Huntington Bank for golf carts, authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the agreement, and to further authorize the city manager to execute any additional documents necessary to carry out the agreement. Next item on the consent agenda is to accept a drainage and utility easement from Parent Custom Homes LLC. On December 3rd, 2024, city council approved a lot split for a property located at 11220 Dakota Street Northwest. As a condition of approval, new drainage and utility easements need to be provided by the property owner to the city. So we're looking to accept easements for drainage and utility purposes from Parent Custom Homes LLC for the property located at 11220 Dakota Street Northwest. The next and the final item on our consent agenda is to approve an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, 2AM tavern, and Sunday liquor license for time and place, 3064 Coon Rapids Boulevard. An application for on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, 2AM tavern, and Sunday liquor licensing for time and place located at 3064 Coon Rapids Boulevard has been submitted by Grace Jacobson, I'm sorry, Jacob Sma. The license and investigation fees have been paid. Approval of the license would be conditioned upon the completion of a successful background investigation, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license, and the submittal of a certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage. So we're looking to approve issuance of an on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, wine, 2AM tavern and Sunday liquor license to JR Brown LLC, doing business as time and place, located at 3064 Coon Rapids Boulevard, contingent upon completion of a successful background investigation.
Your honor, sorry, go ahead. Thought you were done.
The issuance of a certificate of occupancy by the chief building official, Anoka County Environmental Services issuing a food service license, and submittal of a certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability and workers' compensation coverage. And that is our consent agenda.
Your honor, I move to accept the consent agenda as read. Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there a discussion or questions regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
No discussion or questions, but I just want to thank Gateway Fiber, Magnify Financial, and Federal Cartridge for their generous donations. Their donations, you know, make them a partner in our city, helping to provide some of these great events that we, you know, put on every year. And thanks also to those five anonymous donors, you know, giving of their, of their treasure to the, to the senior center to make things a little better for them down there. I just, these donations really make the world go round.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I just wanted to thank Sarah Smith for applying to be on the Arts Commission and Michael Hammond for applying for Sustainability Commission. These commissions mean a lot to our city, both in terms of informing us and just keeping citizens together, so always exciting just to see folks get involved.
All right. I'm a little shocked, Councilmember Carlson, no comment about time and place.
Well, I can go on that, Mr. Mayor, because we've been, I'll tell you.
Because you've been there, right?
Been there a few times. Yep.
I read your Facebook post.
They had this, this non-alcoholic alcohol that they were serving, but now they can actually have the real stuff with it. Although I heard the non-alcoholic alcohol is pretty delicious too, but now they can get the real stuff.
All right, okay, very good. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. Item 11 is to hold an assessment hearing to collect written appeals, and then, and then obviously adopt the special assessments. Ms., oh, okay, we're not going to call him Ms. Hanson. The amount to be assessed for the 2025 Sub 1 miscellaneous assessments, is it still $106,161.13?
Mayor and council, it's actually changed. We've had some folks come in and pay. We've also had seven appeals that will be referred on to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, so depending on if there are additional appeals tonight, I do have those figures, but perhaps it would make sense to wait till after the hearing, and I can give you those final numbers.
All right. The process of hearing assessment appeals will include a hearing before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, before the city council adoption, and the city council still must open a public hearing as required by state statutes. However, at this public hearing this evening, we'll just be collecting written appeals and refer the appellant to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for the review and recommendation. After the public hearing has been closed, the city council may adopt the assessments which have not been appealed. Is anybody here to appeal the assessments? I'm sorry, first, does anybody have any questions before I open the assessment hearing? Hearing none. In the case of, um, the miscellaneous assessments for 2025 Sub 1, is anybody here to appeal their assessments? Anybody here to appeal their assessments? All right, one, yes.
Mayor, maybe for the record, I'll just note that we did have seven appeals come in at a total of $10,586 that will not be included in the final resolution numbers tonight. So those seven will be referred on to the Board of Adjustment for consideration and recommendation to the city council.
All right. Very good. If there's nobody here that's going to file an appeal, we'll close that portion and look to council.
Mayor and council? Since we have no additional appeals, I will let you know what the one, three, and five-year levy amounts are. The one-year levy will be $26,084.13. The three-year will be $40,710.0. The five-year will be $22,586.0. So that total is $89,380.13. As I mentioned, there's about $10,500 in appeals, and then the balance, six or 7,000 that folks came in and paid between now and when the agenda went out.
Very good. So council, we're looking to move those three resolutions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-51, adopting 2025 Sub 1 miscellaneous special assessments, unopposed one year. Adopt Resolution 25-52, adopting 2025 Sub 1 miscellaneous special assessments, unopposed three-year. And, Mr. Mayor, motion to adopt Resolution 25-53, adopting 2025 Sub 1 miscellaneous special assessments, opposed, unopposed five-year.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Is there a discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Resolution 25-7 Sub 9, accepting bid and awarding contract for Highway 10 Water Main Relocation Project, 25-7. Mr. Hammer, anything you want to?
Mr. Mayor, council, as we enter into construction on Highway 10 out there, you've, you've seen a little bit of that work happening. Got a little ahead of myself the last time. This is the official last action related to projects, except when we pay the final bills. We had a lot of interest in this. We had a lot of competitive bids. We're very pleased with the outcome of it, and we would recommend moving forward. This is for the north or southwest quadrant of Main Street and Highway 10. There is a noise wall going to be constructed there right along Crooked Lake Boulevard. So we currently have Water Main within MinDOT right of way. That's our responsibility to relocate. We thought it was best to do it this way outside of that contract. So I would recommend we award a contract to Thomas &amp; Sons Construction in the amount of $251,980. Funding for this project was included in the 2025 budget, and so a portion of it will go to this, as well as a portion that went to the cooperative agreement that we executed with MinDOT a few months back. So happy to answer any questions.
All right, and this is our first time with Thomas &amp; Sons, but you get good reviews on them, huh?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've worked with them in the past. They worked in several other municipalities. This is the first time they've been here in quite a few years. We've, we've heard good things, and we're going to move forward with them.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 25-7 Sub 9, awarding a contract to Thomas &amp; Sons Construction in the amount of $251,980 for the 25-7 Highway 10 Main, pardon me, Water Main Relocation Project. Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Butler. Is there discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Boy, looking at that range of bids, man, $71,000 under the engineer's estimate, that, that's a nice bid, especially if they have a reputation as, well, maybe not with us, but it sounds, Mr. Hammer, that you guys did a good job of properly vetting them in their past work with other places, but boy, that's a great bid.
Yeah, I mean, they were right in there too with those, with several companies, so. All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Speaking of that $71,000 under bid, I think that's great. We're starting to see some really competitive bids out there. I mean, there's eight or nine bidders on this one, and our savings are starting to add up. We're pretty soon we'll be able to pay for that fire truck. I had a question on, on this. We came in $71,000 under budget on this, and it says it's in the 2025 Walder Utility 601 budget, but when I, I just had a question on that. On the 601 budget, we have, we don't have a line item for this on the budget. We have 2025 street reconstruction projects in the amount of 1.4 million. Is that where that budget comes in? I'm just kind of keeping track of, because we are, we're starting to see some nice savings on a lot of these projects this year.
I'm pulling that up now, Councilmember Guskowiak. I believe it was, just bear with me for one second.
Hopefully, we're going to see some savings on the replacement too.
So in our water fund budget, we had, I believe this was a $500,000 in utility relocations.
That was for trunk highway 610, I think.
I take that back. I believe this was in last year's budget. That was a carry forward. And.
It's carry forward, yeah.
I will get you the right answer, because I don't want to misspeak here, but I do know that between this project and the cooperative agreement, we were about $75,000 under what that, what that bid was. So I will get you the right information probably before we leave tonight.
Oh, that's fine, yeah, if it's a carryover from last year too, that's, that makes sense. I just was checking on that math. That's all I had.
That's not going to change your vote, right?
Nope.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14, 13, 14, what are we, 13? I made notes all over the other one to get messed up here. All right, item 13 is to consider a flexibility request for a building addition at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard, Brick Wall Services, Plan Case 24-8. And Mr. Brown, that's why you're up there, huh?
Good evening. So last July, the council had approved a site plan for a related project here at 360 Coon Rapids Boulevard. IDC Automatic has a few different projects going on, the most significant of which is a building addition that nearly doubles the size of their existing building that project has started. That was the main component of that site plan that was approved last July. The site plan did also include a small addition onto the south side or the backside of the existing building. Since that time, the applicant has gone through the Coon Creek Watershed District process, received building permit, received building permits for significant parts of the project. They needed to make one modification to that, and that is, in lieu of the small addition that was proposed on the south side of the building, they're proposing about a 2,000 square foot separate storage building on the southeast corner of the site. And associated with that, it's not really significant enough to even do a formal amendment to the site plan. It did involve an additional request for design flexibility though, and that is to have overhead doors facing Coon Rapids Boulevard, which the River Rapids overlay otherwise does not allow. So you can see here on the left side, that small addition where they were going to store their equipment that has been changed. So on the right side, there is that new 2,000 square foot storage building that would be a, a separate building from the rest of it. It would have overhead doors facing. It would have overhead doors facing the north and east toward Coon Rapids Boulevard. However, that building is set back about 320 feet from the street right-of-way, so they wouldn't be particularly visible. I would also note that they're proposing to, the building's only 20-some feet high, so they're not using that for warehousing or anything like that. It would simply be used for storing their equipment trailers and just use periodically. You can see that again on this site plan. Again, this one shows the truck circulation, the loading docks still in the same place. They always were shown in the back of the building. Trucks would circulate roughly from west to east through the site, and this, this outbuilding would not really change that. You can see the elevations here, the scale is a little misleading on there, but that building, again, would be set back over 320 feet from the public street right-of-way. And in terms of exterior materials, the applicant is proposing a gray ephist material on that storage building. And here, you can see a photo from the Coon Rapids Boulevard right-of-way, roughly where that storage building would be located. So staff is recommending approval of the design flexibility request with one condition, that no outdoor storage of equipment is allowed on the site. To the planning commission, consider this at its March meeting and recommended approval. So I can answer any questions. The applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Brown on this project?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler, and then Councilmember Griscoviac.
Mr. Brown, these are just basic overhead garage doors. They're not dock doors, they're not semi doors, they're just basically bigger garage doors.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Similar type of question, Councilmember Geisler. Can you bring that one picture back up that shows that, so, right around there, is that looking south from Coon Rapids Boulevard? What is that?
Yes, yes. South and a little bit west.
So those doors are going to be way at the south side of the property, 300 feet back from Coon Rapids Boulevard, regular standard doors. Okay, so that makes sense to me. I didn't see this picture in the packet for some reason. And question, were, was that shed originally going to have the dock doors facing south, like to access from the holly side? Is that how that was going to work?
So the original proposal, you can see here on the left, was in addition to the existing building, the dock doors would have been more back, back in, they would have faced south generally, they, because the addition would have been on the back of the building, it wouldn't have been visible at all from the street.
Okay, and then the other question that I had, or just maybe a comment, is this the same project where the HRA extended the extra loan on the 18th of March?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
All right, because I remember asking in that, in that meeting, if this was it, if, you know, if they were done, and I was a little surprised that this design flexibility came up, but I think we can get away with it. You know, it's far enough back, I think I would be okay with it that far back, and there's some screening kind of to the side, so.
Well, and it wasn't their choice, it was Coon Creek Watershed that made some changes, apparently. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Exactly, and that actually brings up another point, because there was another HRA loan back in 2024, and that did cite environmental conditions for kind of one of the reasons why they needed that one. So it sounds like they've been having to jump through quite a bit of hoops to get this project done, and we want to keep these, these folks, I mean, it's a good employer in the city, and they're growing the business and employing people, so I want to support them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I agree, it's a small ask, 320 feet back, it's not a big building, and IDC's been such a fantastic partner in this community with products and jobs for a long time. I think it's a small ask.
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
On that same note, I just want to make it very clear to the business owners out there that might be watching, council doesn't try and do things to make your life difficult on purpose. Come to us with these things, we'll talk about it, and if some negotiation needs to happen, then we can do that, so.
Okay. But unless somebody actually moves it, Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Brown, I'd like a motion that in Plan Case 24-8, we approve the design flexibility to City Code Section 11-1003.11 Sub 18A, to allow overhead doors to, to end loading area to face Coon Rapids Boulevard, finding that the modifications are necessary to respond to site conditions, result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and further the intent of the Port District subject to the following conditions, no outdoor storage of equipment is permitted on site.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, and we give that one to Armstrong. Is there a further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
What?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Geisler.
So one point I would just like to highlight, too, this is actually a perfect example of why we need flexibility in some of these districts, because there are underlying conditions that result in how we want sites developed not really working. In this case, stormwater management, which is a great reason to say, yeah, we should add a little bit of flexibility, we should be flexible with how this is, and they've accommodated it by also mitigating the impact by putting it on the back of the site, making it less obvious, and so it, this is the intent where we have our design guidance and we want that, but there are reasons to be flexible for it, because it makes a lot of sense to make sure that the business can continue to operate and keep going. So this is a perfect example of, of what flexibility is for in our code.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Are we good? All right. Thank you. Item 14, got a bunch of stuff here out of the way. Item 14 is to consider Resolution 25-12 sub eight, accepting plans and specs for the 2025 Reclamite Maintenance Project and authorize solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, staff is seeking authorization to bid the project. This is one of our street maintenance techniques, it's fairly new for us over the last few years, and it's just adding an emulsion to the surface of the roadway. We want to get to the roads that we've reconstructed in the past three to five years, really hit those first. Science tells us this will extend the life of about five years to seven years on the project, and we're kind of treating it like a seal coat. So as long as we're able to keep doing it, in, this could potentially add, you know, considerably more life to the project. So it, it's really hitting those streets that we've been investing our dollars in. It's a cost-effective solution for maintaining those roads. It just adds the oils back to it, it increases that adhesion, the flexibility, all the things that are lost to the sun, oxidation, and other things, this just helps heal that roadway, if you will. So we're excited to keep rolling with this, and we're looking for your authorization to bid the project and move it forward.
Mr. Hammer, I have a tangential question. I'm in full support of this project. Do we do this on our trails as well?
Mr. Mayor, we haven't tried reclamite on our trail system yet. Primarily, we have been handling those with kind of a mill and overlay, similar to our roadways, or a reclamite, where you reclaim it in place, so there's reclamation and reclamite. So we treat it like a reconstruction of our roads, because there was maybe some time that we weren't very well maintaining our road, our trails, and so just adding this, we may be past that point, but it's something we're going to consider for all asphalt maintenance going forward.
Well, and the reason I ask is because it hasn't been that many years since we redid that whole trail on Coon Rapids Boulevard, on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the asphalt still looks good, but there's these large cracks. I mean, it'd be like a half-inch crack that'll go all the way across the, the trail, and I, and I know if, if that was a street, we would want to get it filled and probably sealed. Again, tangential at best.
Mr. Mayor, tho, those things are included in our crack sealing, our standard JPA for that. We have done parking lots and trails under the crack seal, where we'll saw them and seal them. I'm not sure they have equipment quite yet that works on the trails for this, but I'm going to ask that question and make sure that those particular trails are being looked at, but we're, we're starting to treat our trails like our roads now.
Okay, you're the engineer, I trust you. All right, any other questions from Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
And so, so this reclamation product goes on, how far, how long after the reconstruction of the road, is it within a year?
Yeah, you're, you're trying to hit that sweet spot somewhere in the two-to-five-year range.
Two-to-five, okay.
But you can do it in, in three-to-five-year cycle increments, a lot like the old seal coat days, where you put the rock and the oil down and you roll it. That, that caused some other concerns for us, but this is kind of that product that as long as the asphalt binder material itself is in good shape, this will help with that process. So we want to get to it as early as possible and keep maintaining them in that way.
All right, and the reason I ask is, I, I mean, but if it's, if it's three years out, it wouldn't make sense to combine it with the road construction project and bid it at that time, say, hey, you got to come back in a year and a half and put this product on. I suppose it's maybe a different type of company that does this type of stuff. The other thing is, is if we're, you know, extending the life of these roads, I think our residents are getting a little bit bigger bang for their buck, because they have assessments on the road reconstruction, and now we're doing this with regular tax dollars, so they get, you know, extend the life of the road. So it's just, between the thicker pavement and this product, I think we're making right strides in keeping our roads up and doing the right thing for our constituents here, so.
Agreed. Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to adopt Resolution number 25-12 sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2025 Reclamite Maintenance Project.
Second.
It was a motion by Novak and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this motion, that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider Resolution 25-61 sub eight, accepting plans and specifications for the Public Works Roof Replacement and authorizing solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, we are seeking that authorization to go out for bids on that roof replacement. We'll be attacking this kind of with a base bid and alternates as well. The Public Works facility was built probably in three or four separate phases over time. We're, we're really looking primarily on this one, the base bid being over the office areas, the common spaces in that first bay, it's our utilities bay, it's that main component of the building. Those roofs in, are in that 30-to-35-year-old range. Then we're going to get alternate bids and two other locate, we're basically going to get a cost to redo the roof of the entire building, but we're not sure we have the funds to do that, or we're not sure it's quite necessary. We've been doing some destructive testing and things on it right now. So we want to make sure we can afford the, the most need first, and then we'll get the bids on those alternates and package that all up and bring it back to you. But the area for sure is in that 30-to-35-year-old range, and the others are at that 20-to-25-year range as it stands right now. So happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
Mr. Hammer, I was wondering, this is probably just a surface reconstruction, and I may be way off base here, but would it be possible to add some reinforcing to this and allow for solar panels to be put on there at a later date?
Councilmember Novak, this is the same roofing system that went on the water treatment plants that is receiving some of the solar, so this would support what's necessary for that. It's, it's not the roofing material itself, it's the structure of the building that, that supports that, but following completion of this, that would be an option.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Hammer, one of the common things with this roof tube is, or roof reworking like this, is also some equipment maintenance up there. Is there any equipment on the roof that is due for replacement or close to it? Because there's the whole, if you fix the roof and then you rip the AC unit off a year later, you're kind of creating a new hole. Has that been considered at all?
Councilmember Geisler, we, we have replaced some of the items up there. This was not something that was planned. It's, it's two completely separate buckets. I mean, we had to be creative in how we funded this as it is. I can't tell you that every piece of equipment up there is top-notch and ready to go, but the one area that we're looking at has minimal equipment in, in that space, which is another reason why we want to build, bid it as the base bid, because when you have zero obstructions, you're going to get a different cost per square foot than in areas that you do have those obstructions. So I, I can't look you in the eye and tell you that everything's perfect and we won't go back up there again. We are addressing some skylight issues that exist. We have an access hatch that opens in the wrong direction and creates a safety hazard that we're correcting, and there's a ladder as well, that, from a safety standpoint, we're, we're going to fix a few of those issues just from an access standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
Mr. Hammer, thank you for explaining that and just walking through things. I know we emailed a bit. One question I still had is, you mentioned there were also some drainage problems with the current roof. Could you talk just a little bit more about that?
Sure, Councilmember Butler, it's a flat roof, so you have to have some pitch to that, so you have internal scuppers, like things flow internal to the building. Over time, those pitches kind of disappear, so you just end up with flat areas on the roof. So we have to add a little pitch to these, so you have to make sure the water gets to the drains, so that doesn't just sit up there and cause puddles. So we have some flat areas that need to be addressed to correct those problems as well. Thank you for the question.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
To a similar vein there that Mr. Butler talked about, and, and having to do a little bit of reconstruction on the roof as we built. I think long-term plans, I think in your budget outlook for the next few years and even capital projects, would call for an expansion to the Public Works Building, and if that's the case, you know, will these repairs, how can I say this, we're not going to throw good money after bad, are we?
No, Councilmember Griscoviac, the areas we are, are going to be doing under this project are the ones we just remodeled over the last few years, which again is, we end up with little drips that you see around here sometimes after large rains, so protecting that investment that we've already put in. The back area, the very far back area, if you're familiar, if you've been to the site or those open houses, those last few bays where the dump trucks, that's the newest part of the building, those are the areas that are going to be the alternates, so we may not even go that way. Any future expansion to that building is going to have to be back, and so we'll consider that as part of it.
And then lastly, this is going to cover the Carlson Training Center, I would imagine, so we've got to protect that.
Councilmember Griscoviac, it will not include the Carlson Training, that's a separate building, we're looking at the totality of the Public Works Facility as a whole.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler.
I move that council adopt Resolution number 25-61 sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the Public Works Building Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this? Mr. Hammer, I assume that our plans and specs will include a pretty good, because this will also include new insulation up there, right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong, just real quick, like for those of us who like to know, I know what EP, EPDM stands for, but can you let the public know what that is?
Councilmember Armstrong, could you let me know what that is?
I'll give it my best shot. Ethylene propylene di, dianine turpil, turpilumere? Is that, is that close?
It's a built-up roofing system, it creates that barrier, it's a polymembrane barrier. Underneath that goes those pitches I was talking about to make that water drain to its location, so I am not an expert, and next time, I'll send our facilities guy down here and, or, come on down to the open house next month, and we'll maybe take you up there and walk you around.
You know, council, Councilman Novak and I are sticklers for all those little, all those little acronyms that they've got up there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
It means rubber.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are to the open mic portion of the meeting. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the City of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. Who's here for open mic this evening? Anybody here for open, oh, I guess I could have shortened that up a little bit. All right, well, then we will close the open mic portion of the meeting. All right, well, then we will close the open-mic portion of the meeting. Yeah, I don't have any reports on any previous open mics, and we're up to other business.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Since he's here, Mr. Hammer, it looks like there's a little bit of activity on the Boulevard there by our hopefully future bridge coming up. Is that getting started again?
That's correct, Councilmember Geisler. That work, we met on-site again earlier this week, and they are moving forward if this April Fool's snow would go away. But yes, they are, they are back at it. We're progressing to have that thing ready by fall.
Awesome, thank you.
Your Honor?
Who is it? Councilmember Novak?
Mr. Hammer, yeah, I just want to let you know that I've had some constituents actually contact me about this. They were very excited, so they're looking to get that done as soon as possible. Hopefully, the weather will start being nice to us for a change.
Pretty nice. Mr. Hammer?
If I may continue, Mr. Mayor, just briefly for council and those watching, as I mentioned, Highway ten is underway. The latest update on that is, starting on April sixteenth, the southbound Round Lake Boulevard to eastbound ten ramp will be closed. A lot of the work over the next three weeks is going to be nighttime work, where they're working on the shoulders, doing the widening and such. So, there are some impacts out there because of construction activity is happening. Roadway closures are going to happen, starting with that ramp in the southbound direction to eastbound direction. Otherwise, most work is occurring at night during this. And I think I emailed you all the links to that if you want to stay up to speed on week-to-week, day-to-day.
And it sounds like they're going to try and keep two lanes open each way for the project.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
That's huge.
Yes.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, Council, since we're on the topic of Highway ten, I discovered what the issue was with the budget question that was asked earlier related to utility relocation and so on. The 2025 adopted budget in the narrative section on page three-oh-eight, it references trunk highway six-ten utility relocation. It's supposed to be trunk highway ten. In the, sort of the capital summary in the back on page three-forty-five, it correctly lists Highway ten, so you could check that out. So, it is in the 2025 budget, just was listed incorrectly in the narrative section, yeah.
An extra six.
Thank you, because I was like moving budgets around over here.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Our last winter concert is coming up on April tenth. April tenth, Coon Rapids Civic Center at seven o'clock. It's the Backyard Band, variety of music, eight dollars for adults and five dollars for twelve and under, and that'll be it for a great concert series.
All right. Any other business to come before council?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Motion by Carlson, second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.